Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, April 26, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Town Council is here in council chambers, publicly by remote participation only. Calling this meeting into order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the government's March 15, 2020 order imposes strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via a hybrid, remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted in the council chambers. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Reminded that persons who would like to view this meeting law in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.cia.southbridge.mas assumes we are able to. A roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
All members present. Item three, considering accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, April 5, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any errors, corrections, or omissions? Anybody else have?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, roll call.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Abstain.
And Counselor Adams.
Yes. Motion carries. Subcommittee reports to general government, Counselor Steves.
We had our budget meeting last week, and we also had a brief meeting that addressed some of the items that are on tonight's agenda, so I'll address those when we get there. We have our Capitol meeting later this week.
Thank you. It's by my Public Works, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a budget meeting last week and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counsel Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a joint Education and Human Services Subcommittee Town Council meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, April 27, 6:00 PM, council chambers and remote access. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next meeting will be held on 5 May at 6:00. That's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of Persons and Property, Counsel Lazo.
I have no report. We had a meeting, but we have numerous agenda items with recommendations.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements.
One, I had communication with Town Clerk Matty Bonadillas earlier today regarding early voting hours for the upcoming town election. She has proposed several open dates for early voting. While we are not required to do the open voting, early voting, we're not required by law to do that, given the fact that we have a potential ballot question on the agenda, debt exclusion. We are proposing to have those early voting days. She has proposed, and we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting on May 4. I didn't feel it needed to go to general government subcommittee because it should just go straight to council. I don't think there's any need to discuss. We'll just have to take a look at how much it would cost for us to have that early voting. The dates for early voting will be Thursday, May 27, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM; Friday, May 28, 8:00 AM to noon; Tuesday, June 1, 8:00 AM to 4; Wednesday, June 2, 8:00 AM to 4; Thursday, June 3, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM; and Friday, June 4, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Given that it's the Memorial Day weekend, there will not be any early voting over the weekend, but I think that gives enough hours for people that potentially wish to come and early vote here at the town hall, as the town hall is open for business, that they can come in. And as usual, there'll be no need, if needed, people can obtain an absentee ballot through the town clerk's office. So we'll be bringing that forward at the council meeting, and it'll need to be voted on at the next council meeting. As far as notice, given the fact that we have put this publicly at town council meetings and have had announcements, and we'll do it on the website, the attorney has noted that there is no need for us, and that it's not a requirement, there's no need for us to do the additional expense of sending cards to every voter, because notice is being given through the town council meetings as well as public notice on the town clerk's office. So that'll be on the next meeting agenda. Regards to COVID-19 EOC update. Earlier today, we held a monthly meeting. Mr. Pelletier continued to give us updates as he does to all the councilors on a regular basis. Did note that 21% of Southbridge is currently fully vaccinated. In the next 21 days, that number should go up to about 33%. So 21% currently fully vaccinated, 33% within the next 21 days, given the number of shots. Our emergency dispensing site continues to be in full operation. As of today, or as of today's report, they have given 38,000 vaccination doses out to individuals in this area. Kudos to all that have been involved in that. We're working to make sure that the air conditioning in the community center goes forward, and that we were briefed on that. Dr. Vallar gave us a brief this morning as far as the school reopening. And as of today, all of the middle, middle school and high school is fully in school. 80% of our children are in school at the elementary level. So kudos to the school department for being one of the only school districts, I think, in the area that from the beginning of September have been operational in an in-school hybrid model, so, and monitoring and mitigating the COVID pandemic there. I think the school did, also gave us, there will be a graduation that will occur for the high school, and we'll be working as a town and the school department to make sure that that goes off well for the students. So I think that's all I have on that. Mr. Town Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. Just a couple of quick updates from the DPW. As many of you know, we've already sent out as part of the pavement management program, we have bids that are out that are due back next week for the coatings. They are working on the mill and overlay RFP at the moment. We will have the south street bids are due back on May 12. We'll be having a pre-construction meeting for the water operations contract on May 11. And Ms. Blakely did let me know that today, we got the, or she forwarded me today the results of our first water sampling relative to PFAS, which is per in polyfluoroalkyl substances, which is something that is a man-made chemical that can cause health concerns. It's a hot topic these days in water, and our first samples came back negative. So our water quality continues to be excellent, and we have no issues. If communities find those, they have to engage in mitigation to eliminate those. So for now, we continue to be doing well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Presentations. We do not have any presentations this evening. Citizens Forum. Ms. Doyle, I know you sent me an email wishing to be recognized, so I will let you go first. Please state your name, address for the record.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, it's Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. And thank you, Jack, for doing that. I just wanted to let you all know that May is wetlands month, and the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission is having a photo contest. And you can submit pictures of Massachusetts wetlands, rivers, streams, creeks, lakes, ponds, fernalpools, beaches, wet meadows, et cetera. For this contest, there's cash prizes for, I think, the first three places. These all have to be non-commercial pictures. Details of this are on the maccweb.org website. And I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Arbor Day and May Day at the end of this week. I had a comment for number 22. It's not exactly the agenda item, but I was just wondering if, at that point, I guess, if the manager could answer my question that does this 5.46 acres need to be with the solar project as a fire road?
All right, I will recognize you when that question comes up, Maureen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything further, Maureen?
Yep, no, that's it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else watching this meeting via remote participation that wishes to address the council? Anyone else? We will continue to monitor our cases here in Southbridge. We are continuing to be in the yellow. I think once we get to a solid green, we may reconsider opening up the council chambers for public participation and more from the remote participation world. But given the fact that we are still in a higher-than-normal category, we'll continue this way until we can get to a green safe level with the numbers. Anyone else? I do not see anybody else on my list. Okay, moving on. Item nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Jason King to the planning board effective immediately through June 30, 2023, to fill a two-year term vacancy due to a member resignation pending completion of the state's ethics training.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. I guess Counselor Adams first, and then I'll go to Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, it was voting unanimously, all present that evening, to bring Mr. King forward. Just a little bit background with him, he's a, he reached out to me about what he can do. He just recently moved here to the town of Southbridge. That's what he could do to help out the town, and what boards he probably would fit on. And I know the planning board has been hurting for a little bit with members, or lack thereof. And so I put him in touch with the town manager, and he's also a veteran, he belongs to the Veterans Council as well, so, and the VFW.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have had the opportunity to review Mr. King's application, and I did speak with Mr. King earlier. He has a background that is not necessarily in politics, but he's interested in planning-related issues, and his interest in getting involved in this town made me believe that he would be a great candidate for that particular position, so I have advanced his name to you for appointment this evening, notification.
I'll go to Ms. Lazo, then Mr. King is out there, so we can have him introduce himself.
I just want to comment on the gentleman. I welcome you aboard. I mean, this resume was impressive to the town manager, and as a council, I'll be voting in favor of this. But I also would like Mr. King to know that I'm a phone call away on any issues when it comes to planning board issues. And when I say a phone call, I don't mean email. Give me a call, we'll go out, have a coffee, and talk about the issues. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Mr. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did raise the question of whether this was any kind of conflict here. I'm just asking the question, do you think there's any kind of conflict through you to the town manager or the subcommittee chairman? It's not a matter of whether he recuses himself, I just want to know, I just want to understand, if someone is serving on a state senator's campaign, does that raise any kind of conflict? That's all. I don't really know the gentleman, and so I'm just asking that question.
Well, I think, I think Mr. King will probably address that. I would defer to him, because anything that has to do with recusal is incumbent on them as the individual to make sure that they...
No, it doesn't have any, like I said...
Let me finish, please.
Yes.
It's incumbent on the individual about whether there's a conflict, so I'll let Mr. King address your question directly about what he may know from any ethics, or, and then you can follow up with a question if you wish. Mr. King, welcome. Good evening.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, council members, and Mr. Town Manager, good evening. Thank you for having me, and, you know, I'm really thankful for this opportunity. I'm not sure who asked that question, but I can answer that. I've been in direct contact with Senate Council off the whole situation, because I knew it was a possibility it was going to happen. And so we do have ethics training that we have to take. And, you know, I have a direct contact with him, so any kind of conflict of interest, even a hint of a possibility, I can go straight to them and get counsel on it, and find out if I need to take a step back or not. But it's something that I'm very cognizant about and very aware of, and already actively working on.
It was very difficult to understand what you said. I think it was kind of muffled, but, Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add directly to Counselor's, Marquetti's question directed to you specifically?
I thought I heard Mr. King say that he checked with Senate Council to make sure that he didn't have a conflict.
He did give a thumbs up.
Every state, county, municipal employee is required, upon hiring and every two years, to complete conflict of interest training, and they're given a packet, and that would be the same of elected and appointed officials. So he would have already received that if he was working for the Commonwealth, and if he was appointed, we would provide that again to him. That would delineate any potential conflict that gives you examples. Most of those really talk about self-dealing, taking gifts, acting outside of the scope of your authority, or, I can't envision a conflict unless his employer or somebody had a project going on here in the town, or if he felt that maybe there was state money that he shouldn't vote on it. But I have a hard time thinking of a conflict. But I think if he's checked with his employer, who probably has more resources with Senate Council, and they don't have an issue, and again, we're going to provide him the ethics training, he has to take the course, and he has to acknowledge receipt of it, I don't foresee a problem.
Can the council hear me now?
Yes, sir. That's better.
Okay, I just switched off from my Bluetooth. You know, what I was saying earlier was that I've been in direct contact with the Senate Council, and just making sure that we do everything the right way. And if I have any questions, whether there's any hint of a conflict of interest, all I have to do is just reach out with them and clear it with them first.
Thank you. Any follow-up question there?
No, that's fine, thank you. Like I said, I don't know him, and I don't know if it's a conflict, but I do know that if someone becomes a municipal employee, which committee members are municipal employees, then I don't think they can work on someone's campaign. But I'm taking it as, him as his word, and the town manager, that there's no conflict here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Lazo.
I understand the line of questioning, but in the world of conflict of interest, there are different areas of competition and various other things. But to simplify it, if you're the master and server, you usually are in conflict. If you are voting and receiving out in his hand, that would be the direct conflict, and he would have to declare whether there was an issue that came in front of his board to do that. But in looking at what, you know, working on somebody's campaign, a conflict of interest, I've been around a long time, I don't ever remember that being an issue, unless something's changed at the state level.
Mr. King.
Just to allay that concern a little, I didn't work on any campaign-related issues whatsoever this past election, and I don't plan on doing any campaign-related stuff in the future. So the job that I perform as a legislative director is totally separate from the political aspect of the job.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions? Jason, I look forward to working with you, and welcome to this town of Southbridge. And it's always nice to have a air with our state center as well, not just based on planning board, but your involvement with the town on a variety of issues, so, especially the veterans issues and all that. So thank you very much, look forward to working with you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to helping out in any way I can.
Thank you. Seeing no further? Counsel Lazo, go ahead.
Just one quick line. I just want to thank you for your years of service in the military. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
And Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Jason.
Welcome.
Look forward to working with you. Item 10, vote to approve the community center director's transfer request from account number 001132-578100, Town Council Reserve, to account number 001549-521000, Electricity Community Center, amount of $48.19 to pay a prior year bill that was missed in transition to a new community director. Reminded that this vote will require two-thirds.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Counsel Steves.
That was unanimously approved by Gengov.
Thank you. Any questions? I'd like to thank Patricia for the explanation in Subcommittee. I think we had a very good conversation about the reasons why that occurred, so, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, roll call.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel.
Motion carries. Item 11, vote to approve the community center director's transfer request from account number 001132-578100, Town Council Reserve, to account number 001549-521000, Electricity Community Center, amount of $2,000 to cover the deficit in the budget due to COVID vaccination clinic additional usages. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Counsel Steves.
That was also unanimously approved by Gengov.
Thank you. Counsel Catrona, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the only question that I have is any to the town manager's reimbursable through the COVID grant?
We are informed and believe that we will be able to recover these costs as part of running the vaccine distribution center. FEMA has expanded some of the reimbursement costs up to 100%, and I believe this falls under the FEMA reimbursement. I know Ms. Harne is on the line. Certain things were reimbursable under cares, but I believe this is a FEMA reimbursement, and we should be able to get all of it back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And just like to thank Town Manager and Karen and the EOC through their work. We've been very diligent about trying to separate some costs throughout the use of the vaccination center to make sure that we, whatever we can recapture, just speaking as the EOC kind of chair of that, we've been working very diligently to make sure that we capture as much as we can through that process, so, whatever we can grab, we grab.
Any other conversation, discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, vote to approve the cable studio transfer request from account number 001159-558000, miscellaneous materials, to account number 001159-534000, telephone and amount of $300 to cover an unexpected repair call for the cable phone system.
So moved.
Second. Counsel Steves.
That was also unanimously approved.
Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Item 13, vote to approve the Fire Chief's transfer request from account number 001220-511000, salaries and wages permanent, to account number 001220-521000, electricity, amount of $3,250 to cover electricity costs for the remainder of the fiscal year due to the increase in costs.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
This was voting unanimously in favor at Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this is for electricity, future electricity costs or a prior bill, or, I wasn't quite sure on how that worked.
Who are you directing that question to, Counsel?
Through you.
To who?
To...
The chief or the town manager?
Chief Norman.
Chief Norman.
Good evening, everybody. These are for the next three months coming. We had a deficit in our budget due to the budget system that was put together last year through the previous town manager, and also, this has also been obviously a thorn in a good majority of the department heads' sides about not having enough in electricity and in water sewer. So this is moving forward for the three, next three months, and this is just an estimate.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
And Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14, vote to approve the Fire Chief's transfer request from account number 001220-511000, salaries and wages permanent, to account number 001220-523000, water sewer, and amount of $300 to cover water sewer costs for the remainder of the fiscal year due to increase in costs.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Fire Chief. So this is for future costs or a bill that came in?
This is, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Counsel Marquetti. This is the cost of the expected cost to get us to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo.
The vote was unanimous at Subcommittee in favor of this agenda item.
My apologies, Counsel. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Item fifteen, vote to approve the fire chief's transfer request from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five one one zero 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 salaries and wages permanent to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five three zero 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 specialized services in the amount of eight thousand dollars to cover a fit-for-duty testing for employees and purge, file, and shredding, and telephone maintenance, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Counselor Lazo?
It was voted unanimously at subcommittee in favor for Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the chief. Chief, I know I've certainly voted in favor of this at subcommittee. I don't have a problem with it, but when we received our packet, the numbers don't add up. I see the eight thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty dollars for the shredding, and an additional forty-five seventy-two fifty, which adds up to fifty-one oh five ninety-five. Can you explain where the twenty-eight ninety-four oh three or oh five is?
Chief?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, through you to Counselor Katrona. We have two more fit-for-duties at a lesser rate from the original documents that you see in your packet. Fit-for-duty is again for an employee that gets evaluated for fitness to return to work, and the estimated from the cost, the estimated cost for those two fit-for-duties, which I'm hoping that we could get in before July first, is anywhere between twelve hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars. So there's a little bit of a cushion in there to make those adjustments to get to the end of the year, to pay for two employees to come back to work, if that's what happens.
Thank you, Chief. Oh, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah, one quick question, actually, I guess through you to Karen. I know I was looking at the transfer requests between the last one and this one. You say that the balance in the transfer firm account from the previous one is four sixty-six five forty-five oh four, or eighty-four, whichever that is. And then for this one, it says it's four sixty-six two forty-five, either oh four or eighty-four, whichever it is, but it's an eight thousand, but it's supposed to be an eight thousand dollar difference. Also, and a related question is, how much excess do we actually have in this account as opposed to the stuff that we will definitely, that we know we will need to pay for salaries for the rest of the year?
Mr. Town Manager?
Just point of clarification, if you go to the next agenda item number sixteen, you'll see the balance transfer goes down the eight thousand that way, the twenty-five fifty-four. They're in a different order, I think than what you're thinking. If you add the three hundred from agenda item number fourteen to the balance on the transfer sheet for fifteen, you'll see, it's just the ordering of them.
How about the other half of the question?
That's the only part that I'm answering.
Okay.
Thank you. Chief, I guess the question is, do you have enough in your salary account for the remainder of the year? Is that correct?
Well, I was curious as to how much of a difference there is between what you would need and what's in this account.
So you're a little broken up, Mr. Chairman. Are you asking the question, or is this?
I was just trying to clarify his question for, to make sure I had it understood, so that you could answer it correctly. I guess the question, because it's kind of hard to hear Counselor Steves.
I'll try again. Can you hear me more clearly now? Okay, I was asking what the difference is between how much excess you have in this account and what you will actually need to cover the rest of the year's salaries?
I can answer that in two parts. The excess that's in this account was, is what we figured out is leftover from an employee that left last August first to, that position did not get filled until October. So there is the excess for that account, and those funds are right pretty close to what we need for a full year of salaries for the department.
So after all of these, after all of these transfers, then you won't have a whole lot left over beyond what you need for salaries?
We will have the money left over, Mr. Counsel. Not a lot.
Not a lot?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, clarifications? Seeing none, roll call?
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel? Counselor Dow? Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti? And Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item sixteen, vote to approve the fire chief's transfer request from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five one one zero 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 salaries and wages permanent to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five one four one zero zero longevity in amount of one thousand five hundred to cover a longevity payment for an employee.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, Counsel Lazo?
This agenda item was voted unanimously at subcommittee in favor.
Thank you. Questions? Questions of the chief? Seeing none, roll call?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel? Counselor Dow? Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, vote to approve the town manager's request from project number six seven nine zero zero landfill royalties to account number zero zero three one two three dash five eight nine nine zero zero dash nine one zero five special appropriation landfill legal costs in the amount of five thousand dollars to cover the cost of legal landfill invoices, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion is second.
That went through Gengov, we approved it unanimously.
What was that?
We approved it unanimously.
Thank you. Any questions, Town Manager? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager. Are you able to explain what this cost is for, and are we going to get reimbursed for it?
So to date, we have been submitting from reimbursement to the insurance firm that was covering the landfill litigation costs. We have some residual matters that have been coming in on the order of maybe a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a month. There are some ongoing, I would say, wrap-up issues with regard to some of the litigation. I know I've talked to Attorney McKay about a couple of things, just very briefly, and he's had to send a letter or two back and forth. We're trying to work out some issues with regard to clarification on insurance and a few other things. It's nothing significant. I don't anticipate it to get to any exorbitant level, but we do anticipate that for the next month or two, we may see a couple more bills in that price range or that cost. So this is just to anticipate that they'll be coming in. We, I think we needed twelve hundred dollars for this month, but I know that I've had a call or two with Attorney McKay relative to the wrapping up, so we've just figured we'd ask for the five thousand now to cover the anticipated costs that should come in in the next month or so.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel? Counselor Dow? Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti? Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eighteen, vote to accept the statement of work for a grant from the Department of Mental Health for a total not to exceed ten thousand dollars to be used for reimbursement of costs for training time and/or shift backfill that will support up to twelve to fifteen police officers to attend crisis intervention training, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Did this come to you?
Not sure.
Yeah, I don't recall.
I don't recall it's come to subcommittee.
No. So, Chief Woodson? Good evening.
If I could, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager, I don't believe this went to subcommittee. I believe we spoke, or the manager, maybe he can refresh my memory. We just put it on the council agenda with permission, and you, Mr. Chair, I believe, or am I not correct?
No, you are. I just, I had a lot of things going on, yes. We did, you did send me an email, and I think we said we could go right to council on that, so, thank you for refreshing my mind. I do have the email, you are correct, that is properly documented, that it came through the town manager to me, so, thank you.
If I could, all this is a grant from the Department of Mental Health. We had ten or twelve officers trained last fiscal year, and this grant was before council, and this year we'll train twelve, fifteen more, just de-escalation techniques when dealing with mental health issues. It's a great grant, we're going to apply for it every year, and hopefully all of us will be trained within the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? No? Thanks for seeking out that training, especially in this climate of these days, so any training that we give to our offices is a welcome training. Any questions, comments, seeing none, roll call?
Counselor Daniel? Counselor Dow? Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nineteen, vote to accept the donation from the district attorney's office in the amount of five thousand dollars presented to the South Worcester County Drug and Counter Crime Task Force to assist our organization with our drug and counter crime enforcement efforts in the Worcester County area.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Counsel Lazo?
This was voted unanimously at subcommittee in favor, and I'd like to thank Joe Early. Annually, he usually helps out the town like this through his office.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Yep, you know, our detective unit is highly regarded in the Worcester County area. It is now, it always has been. We get about six thousand dollars every year to conduct narcotics investigations. We've been that same amount since the nineties, rather than go to the council and ask more money from our own accounts. Mr. Early is kind enough, usually he gives us about, you know, between ten and twelve thousand dollars a year. This was the first, I don't want to say annual payment, but this is his first five thousand contribution this year, and again, it's all because of the men and women feeding the work that they do in our community, so it's a win-win for the town.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Counselor Dow? Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Motion carries. Item twenty, vote to approve the replacement of the HVAC chiller at police headquarters as outlined in Chief Woodson's memo attached, and authorize the chief to move ahead in obtaining quotes for the replacement. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Second. Counsel Lazo?
This was voted unanimously for approval to council.
Thank you. Counselor Katrona, and then I know, unless, Chief, explain it first, and then I'll let you have a thought. Chief?
If I could, Mr. Chair, we went through this extensively at subcommittee, and I kind of, I'll circle back to, over the last couple of days, I've had a lot of conversations with DPW Director Blakely, who's on the call tonight. I also spoke with a couple of vendors, just to make sure I'm giving everybody the correct information, because I am not an HVAC specialist. I've been told that twenty years is the absolute max for a chiller, regardless of what anybody says. Any chiller used in a public building that operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's just a risk. Anything over twenty years, all the rest is the risk, his quotes, their quotes, exactly. Remember, our building's not a normal office. You don't shut it down at five o'clock at night, open up the next day at nine AM. It's twenty-four seven. After twenty years, every single piece of a chiller is subject to failure, again, quotes from these vendors, not me. Once a component falls, which fails, which just happened to one of our compressors, it's not long before all the rest fails. Asked about doing a Band-Aid approach and replace one compressor, I was told by a couple different vendors, it's about fifteen thousand bucks. They said we replace one compressor this year at fifteen grand, next year another fifteen grand could be for another compressor, because remember, it's floorable. Now, I was told eventually your chiller barrel will fail, and then all those compressors that you replaced are fifteen thousand dollars a piece. Once that chiller barrel fails, it floods the compressors, and then you'd have to replace every single compressor at fifteen grand a piece, and the chiller, which again, now you put more than seventy-five thousand dollars a pair. So rather than doing one at a time and sit and wait for that chiller barrel to fail or the other compressors, they all recommended doing the whole project. Important to note, of course, because I never thought about this till this morning, this is going to happen once, hottest day of the year, we'll have a complete and catastrophic failure if we replace one compressor. And then what happens is we're in a position where we need to rent a temporary chiller. And I found out this morning that that's about twenty thousand bucks a month, every month that you have that temporary chiller on site. So we do fifteen thousand dollars now, we save money, then we have another catastrophic failure in the summer, because it's bound to happen. Now I got to go out and rent a temporary chiller for twenty grand a month, that does not include install and setup charge. So I recommend, and again, DPW, Blakely's here for technical questions, I'm sure, but I recommend that we move forward on this project ASAP.
Thank you. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief. I know we had extensive conversation at subcommittee, and I certainly appreciate your communication this evening. I guess a couple of things. First, we did vote in subcommittee to authorize quotes to be, for you to go out and get quotes and come back to council. This says vote to approve replacement of HVAC chiller at police headquarters, but we voted to move ahead in obtaining quotes for the replacement. Secondary, I think I would like to see those proposals before we go ahead and just say yes, we're going to spend seventy-five thousand dollars or whatever the cost might be. I certainly respect your conversation this evening, that approximately thirty thousand dollars a compressor, but just myself, my own opinion, I would like to see that proposal. And secondly, I'm not sure if this requires an amendment, Mr. Chairman, because what we voted in subcommittee was to go out to get proposals for replacement. We did not vote to replace the chiller. And Mr. Chairman of the subcommittee, Mr. Lazo, maybe can correct me if I'm wrong.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes, he's correct. We did vote to go out for proposals. The question was, was the chiller, did the chiller have to be replaced? There were a lot of questions about the compressors, and I think that the chief tonight has brought out some information that we didn't have at subcommittee about the chiller. Now, whether we replaced the chiller or what, I think the council was looking for, what we voted for was to go out and to find out what to do about it, and have proposals come in recommending what to do about it, because, and with all due respect, we're not AC guys. I'm in the building field, and a couple of other guys have more experience in it, but we were wondering what the experts were saying about replacement. What has to be replaced? Does the compressor have to be compatible with the chiller? Are the lines need replacement? There's a lot of questions when it comes to that AC units that I've dealt with in the building field, so, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not an expert on it. I yielded to the chief to go out and get those answers.
Chief Woodson?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Counsel Lazo a hundred percent at our subcommittee, and I do have quotes, and I also have a quote, we solicited three quotes, we have two, and one of them is also just to replace the compressor, which is a little over fourteen thousand dollars. And again, both of these vendors had said you need to replace your whole chiller, and it was, it came out to eighty-two thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. So I didn't do, I didn't agree to anything, I didn't sign anything, I didn't speak with anybody about it, because I knew we had to come to council tonight for further discussion before any decisions are made. The reason why I didn't rush, but the reason why I kind of expedited this matter over the last week is because it's getting warm quicker. I know, you know, some days it's fifty or sixty, but seventies and eighties are coming, and I don't want to be holding the bag and having to rent a temporary chiller at twenty to be holding the bag and having to rent a temporary chiller at 20,000 a month. So that's why I kind of pushed this along to the council. So I don't know how you would want to vote, or I can send you the information, I've got the quotes in front of me. I'll be happy to do that and revisit it at the next meeting, or you tell me, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Manager, how you would like this done.
Mr. Manager, could you just explain, I know in your memo that you had, you had a conversation with DCAM, I think it was, DCAM relative to the bidding process? Could you just update the council on that and the requirements of the bidding and how we might go forward based on the conversation with council this evening and your formal recommendation of how we proceed?
So, under normal circumstances, and again, these are not normal circumstances, we would engage in a normal procurement process. This would be a building-related project. It should fall under Chapter 149A, I believe. However, when you, be it goods or services or a construction building project, there are times when there is an emergency which necessitates deviating from the standard procedures. And so, in a goods and services, you can write and publish something in the goods and services manual telling people why you had to go outside and do an emergency procurement. Here, the Division of Capital Asset Management oversees the emergency waivers when you're doing a building project. So after speaking with the chief and DPW Director Blakely, we determined, given the lead time as well as the cost and the 24/7 nature of this, the fact that we would have to maintain their technology, their computers, because they have to maintain a certain temperature as well as their cell block, that this was going to be an emergency procurement in the sense that it would take a long time for us to get this, and we needed to get the ball rolling as soon as possible. So I wrote the letter after speaking with DCAM. They gave us the authorization to bypass the normal bid and RFP process and told us that we could solicit quotes and go forward from that. So that is why we're looking to do the solicitation of quotes in this particular instance, because normally at this dollar level, you would be going through a bid process. But here, we can go out in the interest of time, because even if we choose it, some of the notations you saw there, there's a lag time of 10 to 12 weeks, which is going to put us closer to the summertime. So if we had to go through a bid process, which could take us four, six, eight weeks potentially, and then wait another 10 to 12, we would be in the middle of summer. And as the chief alluded to, we'd be looking at a potential situation where we might have to get temporary air conditioning, and our costs would just go up. So that was the rationale behind this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Having looked over this item and reviewed it, I'm hearing tonight, I'm of the opinion that I'd rather spend the money now and avoid having excess costs later if it's going to go $20,000 a month, and say we have to wait another two or three months to do this the quote-unquote "right way," the "long way," that's another 60 grand on top of a 75 grand machine. I trust the chief's judgment on this, and if it's something that's going to make the police station completely unsafe to be in, and make it unsafe for the computers to be functioning in there, that's just, this is public safety, let's just do it. That's my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. If this, if the town manager said this was an emergency in his email, I don't have any problem voting for this. I'm just, I'm just saying that if this is an emergency, then it's an emergency. And I think in our charter, it says, Chapter 10, I think, if you, if the town manager wants to look it up, there is a section on emergency expenditures, 10-1-1, I think. So if it's an emergency, then we, I don't know. It sounds to me like if he's putting it out, he doesn't really have to put it out to bid, I think. So I don't know why he's putting it out to bid then. If this is an emergency, get it done. Correct?
Are you asking a question to somebody?
I think I said the town manager.
Okay, Ms. Town Manager?
So, anytime department heads come to me with a concern like this, that they have to get this rolling, we look at how to characterize it. We had a similar situation. I had to get a DCAM waiver when we had the water main break at the intersection of Elm and Main Street. The way this was relayed to me, that if we prolong the process, it's going to cause us a problem, you know, probably with regard to quality of life for the people in that building as well as the economics of it. And in that regard, you don't have too many options. Either you declare it's emergency so that you can go the quicker, faster route versus taking the lengthy process of doing it through the full bid. So I spelled that all out in my letter to DCAM, and they make the decision as to whether or not it's worthy of going forward, as in they give you that emergency waiver. So I spelled it out, I think, and may have given a copy to you in the email, and I said exactly what the chief and the DPW director, and they deemed it worthy of an emergency waiver, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Katrona?
Chief, thank you for the explanation. I'm not trying to be argumentative in any way with this, just trying to do what's best for the town financially. I'm certainly in favor of this if you say it's an emergency. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for the explanation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Lazo?
Yeah, I mean, I think the subcommittee's intent was to go out and get the work done on the specs and get some experts in there to take a look at it, and I think the chief did that. I commend him on being as proactive as he was. And in this time of COVID, and we talk about air quality, and we talk about the financial impact, I mean, I understand what we're voting on in subcommittee. I think he went out and did exactly that. If you could forward some of that information over to us in an email, that'd be fine. I'm ready to vote in favor of it, as his council always does. Get it done.
Counsel Steve?
I have no problem with doing this either at this point. I would like to see some more specific numbers, just so that we know. How, so if we're going this as an emergency route now and authorizing him to go through the purchasing process, do we still end up approving the contract at the end? I'm assuming we still do, right? How does that work? I mean, does that, does that mean it comes back at the next council meeting, the final, the final purchase price and contract and that stuff? I'm not sure exactly how that works, so.
Yeah. It would be a contract for goods or services, so technically it would, some of those that we've had put in there, when we've had the amounts and allowed the town manager to assign any contract or not. So, I mean, it's a question, I'll let the town manager think about it for a minute. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Chief, you say you have four unit correct for the police station?
Four compressors, correct, sir.
So, do we have any record of maintenance?
Yeah, if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that unit has been serviced. There's four separate compressors, and, I mean, it's 24 years old now, so yes, there are records on file. It's been serviced, and it's just, it's at its end of life now.
You think every year we're going to replace one?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely not. The expenses that we've incurred on this unit over the years, from 1997 to now, have not been very much, my memory serves me correctly. Very expensive unit, but it lasts, you know, I'm hoping to get 20 years out of this unit if this is approved.
Okay, because if they're really maintaining them right, you know, they should know ahead if the unit is gonna, you know, obviously, they can't guarantee 100%, but if they're maintenance all the time and the right time, I think they should know before we come into that point, I'm a urgency situation, you know, like, because you have another tree, and I hope, you know, they maintain them right, we don't have to change one every year, you know, we catch it before it happened.
And the issue with that, Counsel Dow, I'm not sure if you were at the subcommittee meeting, through you, Mr. Chair, this was kind of a strange failure, we'll call it, what I could have a better way to put it. One of the fans in the compressor shattered and pierced some other equipment inside the unit. So very unpredictable, and I was told that, you know, you couldn't have predicted, you couldn't have seen that coming. It was a strange failure, just they didn't, they don't really see that very often.
Chief, that happened, sorry.
Go ahead.
Chief, that happened, one of my condenser at the station, the cooler, if you don't clean the back of it and the fan, too much air is flowing, it will block it, and that's why the fan is shadow and broke. So if it was maintained on a, on a certain time to clean that unit from the back where the wind go through it, that will save the fan from shadow and broke, the way you say. I don't, so I'm not sure if there's a lot of tree above that unit or in the position is a lot of leaves. That will happen. It happened before, you know, exactly what you say, one of my locations. So it need to be maintained all the time, like this, the side of it doesn't block, the wind will go through and keep it cool. Thank you.
So I guess, just so we can give some clear direction to the town manager and the police chief, so I understand. My sense is, the consensus of the council is that move forward, getting a formal quote as to the scope.
I have that already.
You have that already?
I have that here tonight.
I mean, do you have a dollar amount of what the quote would be?
Jack, I put it in the chat.
Oh, yeah, well, not all of us can see the chat, so.
Okay. Yeah, I have the quotes in front of me if you want me to read them, the amounts to you.
Okay. So, go ahead.
So, EDS Mechanical, Inc., provided a quote of $82,880.
Yep.
General Mechanical Contractors provided a quote of $84,500. Both of them are for replacement of the entire chiller.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I could quick, just because I see Karen raising her hand, just kind of, I know I'll be asked this. We certainly attempted to get this covered with COVID money, and we were told, no, sorry, chief, nice try, because I was going on the air circulation, the safety of the police officers and dispatches in our prison, and we were told that this doesn't qualify. So I just wanted to at least mention that.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that the final number? Is any, is that guaranteed final number, or we're going to come in later, we need an additional, we'll forget something, Heather?
Well, we didn't, we don't have a formal bid spec for this, so this was based on us telling them that we wanted the chiller changed out and replaced, and replaced with another unit of the same size. So, you know, this is what they told us they needed to do. They both visited the site, they both were there to see the, what happened to the old one and what was wrong with the compressor. They both gave the chief and me the same answer, that the chief told you tonight, that this chiller has already done its service and that they did recommend it being replaced. So we don't have a bid spec to bid against at this point. All we have is them, you know, coming to see the job, and plus, what we told them is that we wanted the whole thing replaced.
Counsel Katrona?
Quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Heather. Are either one of these preferred contractors or contractors, do they currently service the units now? Do they do maintenance on any of our units in-house?
So I know that the chief was familiar with EDS. Previously had done work for the chief, so that's where he had had them work. They are not the contractor that we, that service, that are HVAC service contractors right now. We did have them come and look at it. They said they would give us a quote, we have not received that quote yet. I don't know if there's still one coming, but at this point, we do need to start moving this along, because as the town manager did say, there is a long lead time once we even have this equipment ordered. So General Mechanical Contractors is the contractor that's doing the work in the R&amp;B right now. That's where we had gotten their name from. So I think the chief has something to say to what you do.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Counsel Katrona, EDS has been servicing our building for 15-plus years. They do a lot, all the work at police headquarters. It's a great company, reputable, right in Putnam, so we use them often. They come out for us whenever we need them. I've never had any issues.
Thank you.
So I highly recommend that company.
Thank you. Obviously, they'll minimize the downtime, I would presume?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, will we need to make an amendment to?
Yeah, I think Counsel Lazo, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment at this time.
Thank you.
If we can delete on the motion in obtaining quotes, and when it says, chief, to move ahead for the cost up to $82,880 for the replacement.
I'll second that amendment.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, also, to double back for a second about what Counsel Marquetti asked a few minutes ago regarding the charter. Section 10-10-1 specifically states, "To meet a public emergency affecting life, health, property, or public peace, the town may declare, the town council may make emergency appropriations," which is obviously what we're doing. "Any such emergency order shall be declared in an emergency preamble thereto, separately voted on and receiving the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the full council." So what I was, what I would like to do is amend your amendment and the whole motion is to add at the beginning, "Given the potential danger to health and safety of staff citizens at the police department and the risk to our dispatch and other equipment, computer equipment of the police department, and the lag time of 10, the potential lag time of 10 to 12 weeks, I move that we declare this to be an emergency appropriation and then add that to what you just said."
Right, it is one amendment.
Yeah, just write it as a friendly, one amendment.
Right, friendly amendment, yes.
And I think we'll have to get the specific language to, Mary Soshi can put it in a record clearly.
Right.
All right. So we had amendment, is that friendly amendment, second? So Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Will do that amendment.
Counsel Lazo? Do you have a question on your amendment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So if they already got, it should be no more than that, on the amendment?
Up to.
Up to.
Correct. And is any warranty on that unit, Heather? How much, how long the warranty? One year, two year, 10 year?
One year.
One year, all the parts and labors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mrs. Harnoyz is trying to reach you regarding funding issue.
Yeah, I saw her, I saw her, thank you. So, all right, so we have an amendment to go up forward with this. I would just ask that if we could also add to the end and authorize the town manager to sign any, because it is an emergency, to sign the contract so it doesn't have to come back?
I have a problem, no problem.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Harnoyz?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I would also like to recommend that we need a funding source for this, and I would like to recommend the appropriation from the stabilization fund, which would need a two-thirds vote of the town council.
Okay. And since this motion requires a two-thirds, would that, do you need a separate vote on the appropriation? Because the emergency preamble requires a two-thirds vote.
It does. It does specifically say it should be separately voted on, so I would assume we would have to do two votes.
Okay.
Based on what the charter says.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there any discussion on the amendment? I think we're all clear on that? All set? Roll call on the amendment?
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Then I'll just have a motion 20A/B, so that one will be, A will be the preamble, B, vote to authorize an appropriation of 82, up to $82,880 from the stabilization account to fund the replacement of the HVAC chiller at police headquarters.
So moved.
Second. Is that good enough, Karen? You got that? All right. So we have motion, a second? Any discussion on that? Could you, Karen, Karen, do you know, give us a quick update? How much is in stabilization right now? I know there's quite a bit, right?
I believe it was about 4.4 million.
Right. Because we put a lot of money from last year into that, so. Okay, is that your question, Counsel Ryan? All right. Any further discussion? Okay, is there none? Roll call?
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
All right, chief. Keep a surprise on how that goes.
Thank you.
Chief, you have one question?
Go ahead.
Chief, can you do me a favor? Next time we go virtual, can it say Southbridge instead of Charlton Dudley on your shirt?
I knew you, I kind of.
I mean, it was $82,000.
I planned on it being you, but my son's coach, I have to wear this.
I got one for you.
There goes a cruiser. So I think what he's saying is the next child football practice you have to go to, you have to wear a Southbridge one. Southbridge football. There you go, chief.
We have my quickie.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 21. Vote to authorize the treasure collector to enter into compensating balance agreement during fiscal year 2021 as permitted by Mass. Journal of Lock, Chapter 44, section, I think there was a section left off of this, I'm sorry. What was the section? I know we had it on the last one, do you know what the section?
53, I think.
Section 53.
I think so.
Thank you. I'm sure it's in there. Yeah, 53F.
53F, yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Marquetti. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Counsel Steves?
That was recommended, I think, I want to say it was three to one, I don't think it was unanimous, but I can't remember offhand.
I believe it was three to one. There was somebody that voted no?
I believe so. I think it was you.
You voted no, Counsel Marquetti.
I think so. Maybe, it might have been unanimous, I don't, I don't have the minutes in front of me, so.
No, Mr. Chair, that one, that was unanimous.
Was that one unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you.
We did debate it for a while.
All right.
Sounds like something I would do, though.
Questions? Comments?
Yep.
Melissa, free for crap?
What's this, you read no votes, do you? Can't hear you.
You kind of got to move that mic too up, because we had trouble the other night listening to you two.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
So the purpose, what we're trying to accomplish here, compensating balance agreement, is it's to procure banking services, and there's no direct cost to the town, but there is an indirect cost in the sense that the bank offers us a service in return for our deposits with that institution. And we, we're looking to do a lockbox service, and the purpose of that lockbox service is to alleviate some of the peak time, especially springtime, which has passed for this year, but this would be, you know, something to address next spring when the motor vehicle commitment one goes out and the volume of work in the collector's office causes a backlog there, and that sort of snowballs when the, the staff there can't keep up with the mail, because all of those payments come in at the same time of year, mostly March. So the service would be to have the, the mail sent to the bank directly for deposit. They would process it through a scanning process and then remit a file to us that we could import batches daily. Therefore, the money gets into the bank faster and we receive less calls, inquiring from the community about why their check hasn't cashed and why we're, you know, a week plus behind on our work. And so there were some questions, excuse me, last meeting regarding, you know, could we get out of this service? And the truth is that this is a piece, we're charged, even though we're not charged directly, the analysis is done piecemeal, so for every piece of mail they process for us, we get charged a few pennies. And so if we're not using it, we're not being charged. If, so if we stop, we would just stop sending the mail to the bank for processing if it wasn't working for us. wasn't working for us, and like I said in my last meeting, you know, we could use this year round, or we could piecemeal it in the way that some of the colleagues I have recommended, they only use lockbox for motor vehicle commitment one because that's the time that it's most needed throughout the state of Massachusetts, and you don't want to staff for one month of the year when that's all your, your volume.
Questions? Council Steves?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, I probably should have asked this to Jenga, but it didn't occur to me. According to the recommend, according to the, the documents that you provided, it suggests that, it says the retail lockbox per item processed would be 4,150 volume, where does that number come from?
I'm not, I didn't hear the.
It's, it's listed, let's see, it's on the lockbox estimate page for People's United, under the services provided section, it talks about retail lockbox per item processed volume of 4,150. It also says locked up box deposit, per check deposit of 4,150. I was curious where that number comes.
So those are counts, they're like, we gave them estimated counts through the year, and they've normalized that over 12 months.
Oh, okay.
As an estimate of what it would cost per month. So the truth is, the analysis would be done monthly, so if we had a high volume month like we would in March, that, that month would be more expensive for us or require larger deposits, whereas a small volume month, such as June, would have a much lower number. So they just basically took the amount of bills we send out a year and divided that by 12.
Okay.
To make an assumption as to how much work would go through.
So essentially, this, this says that we're, we mail out 4,150 bills, like, like excise bills? It's like 4,100 or so?
Well, so we, we mail over 20,000 excise bills annually, and then we mail 5,000-plus real estate bills, and then we mail around the same utility bills additionally. So they're taking all of that volume together and compiling it into a number for us.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And, and assuming that much, that not all of it will go to them, but it's, you know, they're sort of basing it on experience of other communities, you know, not 100%. Lot, lot of people will choose not to use that service, they want to come see us, they want to know that we're processing their payment, they want to receive that receipt.
Right.
A lot of people like to use the online bill payment, but this is just an option for people who are using the mail that is faster for us and, and for the customers.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So the town is going to authorize the, the bank to be access the, the bill in for the town hall when they process the bill? How they gonna tell your system, so, so pay the bill? They're gonna have access for that?
Yep. So what happens is they, on your bill, there's a barcode at the bottom that we use internally here, they would use that same barcode to scan it with a copy of your check, create an image, we would receive an image of every single stub and/or check. If they do not have a matching stub and check, they will send that as a rejection item for us that we need to review daily and respond to them. If we do not respond to them timely, they will take that, those items that are unclear that they can't read by machine, and mail them back to us, or sometimes we will say, you know, Melissa's bill, check was written incorrectly, mail it back to us so we can call her and explain the problem. So that's the, that's a daily process, and the, the file that we would receive is similar to the file that we receive when we receive online payments, which a lot of people in town here are using. The bank receives the payments, they, they know our bill numbers, and they create a file that has the bill number and the amount of the payment.
So, may I continue, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. So, let's say residents have three, four bill, and he writes one check. The bank is going to be able to separate that from the check, or no, the bill have to be for, every bill have to have a separate check?
So they can do it, so that as long as they add up exactly, what they will ask us to process is anything that doesn't add up exactly. So if you wrote a check for $500, but the five bills that you sent are only for $498, they will ask, what do you want us to do? And we'll have to intervene on those, those items. They can't do exceptions, it's a computer, it reads, you know, I have bills for 500, I have a check for 500.
Okay, so if they have a different amount, they have to either call here or send?
They, they will send a file to us daily with exceptions and notes. We often get notes in other communities I left, if, if someone puts a sticky note on their bill, they have a question, those notes will come through to us online, basically through an email or a portal where we can print that out or just view it. The other thing that's nice is that when we're doing research, we can see Melissa's check and Melissa's bill, 1, 2, 3, 4, and the $50 in that image, and, and we can research that image, it's permanently available to us in our data files.
Okay, and that will eliminate or will be good for the town, less staff, or the same staff we're gonna?
So I, I, I'm looking to do this to eliminate, there's a peak time of year where this, that you, we wish we had more staff in, in March, but in other months, you wouldn't need that. So this is to eliminate backlogs in the slow months, but I don't think it corrects the rest of the year. It's, I mean, in the peak months, it's to eliminate backlog in the, in the peak months, especially spring.
Thank you. Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Melissa. Question, why can't the office process online payments for late payments?
So the reason they can't do that is there's a disconnect with our old system and our new system. The old system wouldn't calculate interest through the next day, so the only way we could put that up was to show that every, it goes up in a file, and every bill would show late, and every bill would have interest, which is not what we want to show, so that's why the, the late files. The new system that we have not fully implemented, that we're still working out some kinks are, will be able to show the daily interest, and therefore, late payments will be able to be processed online.
Okay, because yeah, it's, not only did I have trouble with it, but I know in Denver people have trouble with the online system. I actually called today, and I didn't get a satisfactory answer, she didn't really seem like she wanted to help too much, so.
So I will say that what we, I've told people in the past that we have currently, like I said, hopefully within the next month, we'll have this other system where it will show, it literally reads our accounting system, it says, you know, my interest on my bill is 13 cents today, and it's $1.14 at the end of the month, or whatever the interest might be, and I can see that date as the day I'm processing it. But what I've told people who have late payments in the past is that we have a workaround, it's not pretty, but there is a miscellaneous payment, and so you can make, make whatever payment amount you want. So I know that in a motor vehicle, we will not accept a partial payment, but if you were to call the office and say, your, say your motor vehicle was due, and we say, okay, well, Melissa's bill is now $65.13, I could go into the miscellaneous, put in $65.13 and say motor vehicle, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then it would be able to process that way. It's just a more manual process, but that's the workaround we do for that right now. We also encourage people who are trying to make monthly payments on their real estate bill to do it that way, because sometimes it's easier to, for some of members of the community to manage their payments monthly rather than the quarterly bill, so it's not necessarily that they're behind or that they're late, but they need an alternative way to pay, and we don't, we allow them to pay any, in any denomination for real estate.
Thank you. See, that, that was a great explanation. If you could just inform them to give that explanation when somebody asks, because I was very unsatisfied with my answer today, it was, I'll tell you more after, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
Any further discussion? See none, roll call.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
And Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Item 22, vote to waive the town's right of first refusal for 5.46 acres classified in Chapter 61 status, identified as parcel 026-003-A-00001, and located at 301 Dresser Hill Road. All other land in this parcel that is classified in Chapter 61 is excluded from this waiver.
So moved.
Second. Council Steves?
Yeah, we went, this went through Jenga, of extent, some extensive discussion on it. It was a little confusing, I thought, because Will had originally mentioned that he, he thought that this was inadvertently left off the previous time we had gone through Chapter 61 right for refusal a couple of years ago for the same property. It's a solar project over off of Dresser Hill, and for some reason, according to the map, there's, there's basically these two snaky sections that are, that run most of the way around the actual solar project that are, that are now being taken out of 61, and they probably should have been taken out two and a half years ago or whenever this project was done. So that's why it's coming before us now.
Thank you.
We did recommend approval.
Thank you.
And I think Maureen, if she's still on, wanted to comment on it.
Yeah, and Mr. Conoy is on as well. Council Katrona, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly have no problem, I'll be voting in favor for, of this this evening. Just a question that I have is, and maybe Will can answer, what's the amount of the rollback taxes for the property at the time of the conversion through now?
So I haven't calculated that yet. It's at 5.466 acres, the amount is going to be relatively small, because the rollback is on the amount that would have been assessed at fair market value, less what they actually paid in Chapter 61. Well, this is real land that under, would have been valued if it hadn't been in Chapter 61 at $2,000 an acre. Chapter 61 actually values it, not exactly, but approximately 5% of its fair market value. So even if you just use $2,000 times that tax rate, it, it's.
You can do the math, okay.
Less, probably less than $1,000. But I haven't calculated it yet. But the rollback is going to be relatively low. I will say, I will say, this five, 5.86, 5.466 acres, when they, when the attorneys requested to remove land in 2019, they specified 13 point something acres, and that's what the town voted to waive its right of first refusal on. And that's what we gave a release for, exactly what they asked for. When they actually built about a year later the solar fields, it was bigger than that 13 acres. So I valued the whole amount, and the entire amount of the acreage at its use value, commercial use value for solar, which is $50,000 an acre. So I just want to make that clear. Last year, they were valued at $50,000 an acre for this land that we're talking about right here. They didn't get a break of a penny. In fact, in fact, they're screaming at me that they're, that the value is far, far too high, but that's the nature of the beast.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Steve?
Um, yeah, just to clarify, Will, so are you saying that this 5,008, this five, this five, I'm sorry, this 5 point whatever acres was valued at $50,000 an acre last year?
Yes, I am.
This, this part was too, as opposed to the stuff that's already got solar on it?
The stuff that already had solar on was valued at $50,000 an acre.
Yeah, I knew that.
And that, that came out that we waived our right of first refusal on.
Right.
And this additional 5.466 acres was also valued at $50,000 an acre for fiscal year 2021, the current year, which is as of January 1, 2020. Yes.
Huh. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I guess as a follow-up question then, is that, is that what prompted them to say, hey, we got to get this out of the 61A because they realized that they were larger than the scope that we had originally gave them?
No, I don't think so, because on this property, after, after that vote, within probably three, four, five months, I received a call from the developer, not his attorney, and he said, he said, we should have taken more land out. I said, hey, you requested the 19, whatever that amount was, the 13 or 19 acres, I don't have in front of me. And you, you know, and I said, he wanted to remove the remainder or get a waiver on the remainder, and I said, you have to go in front of our town council then, do the whole procedure. And so they, I think they talked about it internally and just delayed for a while, and then probably somewhere along the line, their investors in the project said, no, we want to make sure all, we've got all our Ts crossed, arrived on it. I think that's what, that's what caused this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Doyle, do you have a question, you want it?
Yeah, I just have a question, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. I just wasn't sure, because of the muting and all this stuff. But I thought that the perimeter road was the fire road, so it has to be with the solar project, so it just doesn't make any sense to me that they quote-unquote forgot it. And I think it, it, I mean, it still needs to be there for the, for the fire, you know, if they need to get in there, if a battery explodes or whatever. So Chief Normanton, that would be great if you could explain that. Thanks.
I, what was the question? Whether it's a fire road? I thought the perimeter goes around the whole perimeter.
Yeah, because it, I think it's the fire road around it, so, so why did they quote-unquote forget it until now? I just think that's ridiculous.
Will, do you have any answers?
Is it, is it, is it a fire road, Chief Normanton?
I'm going to defer this to the assessor, because he's the one bringing this forward. Will, do you know, is this a fire road, or is this just easement area?
It is partially, it is partially the fire road, it is partially the driveway. I don't think they forgot it. I think their attorney made an error two years ago and didn't request a proper amount of land for that, for the right of first refusal. In the scheme of things, I don't think it makes a great deal of difference, we valued it and taxed it at the higher amount. I don't think, I don't think they forgot it, I think the attorney made an error in what they requested, and it took them this long to get it on track, or where they notified again and requested the remainder be, get a release on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, roll call.
Council Steve?
I personally don't like taking stuff out of 61, but this has already been basically abused, so I'm going to say yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
And Council Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Item 23, vote to ratify the commercial lease agreement between the town of Southbridge and Harrington Memorial Hospital for approximately 6,490 square feet of office at 153 Chestnut Street, Southbridge, for the lease amount of $2,704.16 per month, terminated within a 30-day written notice as agreed within the terms of the lease, and authorize the town manager to set, sign said lease. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Council Steves?
Oh, yeah, we approved that unanimously at Jenga.
Any questions for the town manager? Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the town manager, I see this, the term of the lease begins February 1st, 2021, so has this already begun?
No, but the hospitals indicated that they will start as of that date, because that's when they realized that they could afford to, to offer us the, the rent. So they brought it up at around that point in time, and they're willing to honor it going back.
Thank you. If I can continue, also in tax utilities and maintenance, it states that the lesser is responsible for trash removal excluding medical waste. Does that mean the town is responsible for the medical waste? It says excluding medical waste.
My understanding is they were going to pick that up. We were picking up the utilities, and we were going to submit them, but I can double-check that with Mr. Lemieux over there if you want to make that some type of contingency, but as far as I know, my dealings with them, they were planning on taking care of those items.
If we're paying for the medical waste, certainly that's a concern.
I got to double-check.
That I would have. Also, if I can continue, it states under alterations and additions that the tenants Also, if I can continue, it states under alterations and additions that the tenants can make non-structural alterations, provider the less, provided the lesser consents in writing. When they, when they leave, will they return the premises or would they vacate the property? Will they return the property to its original state? It doesn't state that in this. I didn't see it in the lease.
So if, if anything, any alterations contingent on consent from the town, we could make that a requirement. The only thing to date that they have asked to do was to, I think, modify electrical outlet and to run high-speed cable. They consulted me both times, and I had our inspections go over and look at it, and they bore all the costs of doing that. So those are the only changes that have happened to date, and they did not seem to be intrusive or really alter the structure or the facility in any significant way. They used, as I understand it, the existing outlets and drops, so.
Thank you. If you could just circle back, if you could just get back to us on the, on the medical waste, I'd appreciate it.
Well, can I just ask a question? We are the lesser, right?
Right, that's what I was going to say.
And it says excluded, excluded medical waste.
Right.
Okay, maybe I misread then.
And, and that's what I, my next question was going to be, if you could just direct, because we are the less source.
We are the less org.
If, if we take care of trash, except the medical waste, then.
Excluding the medical waste. My apologies. I did misread. Thank you. Did, I was just going to say the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when they lease the building, they have to provide insurance and pay the sewer and water and all that stuff?
So, as I mentioned during the subcommittee, normally, we would have pushed back on that, but we are getting reimbursed or seeking reimbursement for any of the utilities over and above, which are normal for that facility. I've asked Ms. Haddock to, to track that, so that shouldn't be an issue. You asked something, did you have a two-part question? I thought you asked something else in there.
You know, when you rent a commercial building, it should be all included through the person that's leasing the property. Water, sewers, liability insurance and all that, you know?
Okay, no. As I said, under a normal lease situation, if it wasn't the hospital that we're partnering with, we would have pushed back on that particular thing, realizing that they are offering to pay the rent, and we never talked about it beforehand, and the fact that we were going to apply for the reimbursements, I did not make it an issue at the moment.
So we can get the reimbursement back from, that's what, so?
I'm having a hard time hearing.
I said, we can get back the, if you have any expense on, you know, utility and all that, so you get reimbursed for that, for the town, correct?
That, that's the plan, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we've been tracking that all along for any significant increases in what's going on over there. I've asked Ms. Haddock to make sure, so that we can document what is normal utility usage versus what's going on during this, you know, unprecedented situation over there.
Thank you.
Just to comment, I don't think any of us anticipated that this would be as lengthy a period of time for vaccination or how long this is going to go. And I think as, as we find out, we're probably going to be into the late fall, and if things hold true, where there may have to be a booster shot, depending on how that rolls out. So I guess it's a, thank you to the hospital for stepping forward and the town manager working with them to draft this agreement, you know, for the town to at least recoup, you know, some revenue that otherwise we wouldn't have at that location. Otherwise, that building would just be locked up, closed and not used. So at least we're capitalizing some revenue for that building, and we're putting out a benefit to our community, safe community. And we are, like I said at subcommittee, we are a model, we were a model for other communities to duplicate what we've done here in Southbridge, setting up a vaccination clinic well in advance of anybody else in the area. So should be proud of, of our accomplishments in that regard.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 24, vote to approve the town, that the town apply for the USDA Rural Programs, Community Facilities Disaster Funds, NOFA 2019-19552, providing 35% of capital purchases made prior to June 2021 to eligible communities per USDA requirements, with a USDA secured amount of $131,808.22 of grant funds for our community. Town to apply for grant, the grant funds to capital appropriate purchases as described in the memo attachment dated 4/15/2021. Summary of grant request items table revised 3/25/2021. Police DBW equipment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, we debated this at great length on GenGov, and we've had it up here before, was it GenGov before? And this time, we decided to vote for three to one in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. You have anything you want to add?
I know we have Ms. Dean here this evening as well to answer any questions relative to the re-characterization of the vehicles. I know that when we met the very first time, there were some questions about what was going to be placed on the list of items to be sent to the USDA. So we did have some lengthy discussion the other night about the, some of the various options and permutations. Ms. Dean can elaborate if you want to hear from her rather than me explain it and then her explain it again. But essentially, we, we have some assurances from the USDA that we could get monies anywhere from 115 to just over $130,000 back as a grant, which would be 35% of the total which we were proposing. And there's one or two alternatives that Ms. Dean has that she'll share with you. And I guess I should turn it over to her at this time, just so that everybody gets to hear it one time.
Good evening, Ms. Dean.
Good evening. Thank you for entertaining this motion. It was discussed, as Counselor Steve said, at GenGov, what the different, as town, as town manager said, of the permutations were. And so we presented at the GenGov meeting the options to consider instead of just the DPW vehicles and the police vehicles, to also consider an ambulance for the fire department and a, the large fire engine. However, we were advised by the USDA granters that if we could hold on asking for the ambulance until after July, there'll be new funding available through COVID, new COVID funds available through the USDA, that we should apply for the ambulance then. And so it was my suggestion that if you could fund, whatever you fund, if you could hold on the ambulance, it sounded very promising. And so you ended up voting on, as you're all likely aware, that the 3/25 iteration, which was just the two DPW trucks and the two police vehicles for now.
Counsel Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to the town manager, and I'm sorry, a Mr. Subcommittee meeting. If this is approved this evening, are these items taken out of the capital?
These would be items that we would be looking at. They would, they're currently in the capital plan, so we would be moving things around, but yes, they would not be at the bottom line if we take them. Essentially, we would be taking them out of order, for lack of better terminology, that if we would be submitting these, we would be looking to do them for the sole purpose of saving the money. So we wouldn't be asking for four cruisers, you know? We would, we would have to move them from one, essentially, out, take them out of order, submit them. So to your, I guess, to answer a very basic point, we would have to take them out of the capital bottom line in order to take, address them separately, to send them to the USDA.
Thank you.
So essentially, I know the, I guess a question I have, and this is your first budget thing. We did have a capital improvement program, line item budget that said different funding sources. So essentially, this, this equipment would still be within that, that spreadsheet, but it would just be what the funding mechanisms would be? For, for purposes of clarification, I mean, I, I know that sheet says these are the, how we're going to fund things, so it'd still be on that plan, but it would be how it would be funded. Is that fair to say?
Yes, I mean, they are listed when we made a first pass of the capital budget. They are listed, we did list some of those items as alternative funding source, the USDA grant for some of them. So they're on there. We would have to, we're going to have to pay for them and then submit it. So I think I want to walk back my statement there and think about it a little bit more. But we will ultimately pay it from capital, but we'll be submitting it for the grant, for the, for the monies back once we take care of it. I guess I, I have to get you a better answer on the order of operations there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I don't really want to rehash the whole subcommittee meeting, but as I said before, at 35%, I just don't think it's enough to fund all these items. Some of the, as I've said before, I prefer 75%. I don't really see any difference between this and the last one. It's still 35% of the cost, only now it's more money than before. Some of these items, like the DPW requests, one of the trucks, there was something wrong with the electrical. I, I don't see why we can't take a look at the electrical. It sounds to me like it's a short. If it's a short, I certainly don't think it would cost this much to replace a short. I'm not going to argue about the police interceptors. I'm sure they need them. But I did, I do remember that we, we bought some radio equipment last year, I thought, or something, but, and then, I don't know what happened to them. Did we put them back? Did we use the money for something else? But anyways, like I said, the first time around, 35% for me is not enough. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I understand the choice two vehicle for the DPW, but do we have enough employee to use those vehicle? Do you think we need a sweeper, but on a truck to clean the town? So, you know, I agree with Counsel Marquetti, that truck have a wiring issue. It can be looked at and fixed. And I don't know if the grant will support a sweeper, you know, to sweep the town road and keep the town clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To address the DPW dock, truck situation, I specifically looked at that truck when I toured DPW. That truck has been maintained, it's an 84 truck. It, the complete, the electrical system is completely rotted and rusted. They have sealed it temporarily just to make it useful for now, but that truck is not going to work. That truck is going to fail. So we need to pay for this truck now and not wait till later, until it breaks down in the middle of a storm or be, in being used. This is a truck that Heather has quite specifically shown to be in, what's the word? It's not optimal at this time to be using that truck. It's less than optimal to be using at this time, based on the condition it is in. Water is going to get back in once, and once it gets back in, the horn's going to start going off, the lights aren't going to work. That was the big thing, was the lights didn't even work. So I, how can we run a vehicle with lights that aren't working? That, the DPW's repair department is quite extensive, and they do a lot of work. And unfortunately, I think that's to their own judgment at times, because they're so good at doing their work and maintaining these vehicles, people don't often want to replace them. But this vehicle is one of them that needs to be replaced. It's not negotiable, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I'm not aggro regarding the truck need to be replaced, but not necessarily two at that time. There's another grant coming up in June before the winter. And if they wash the trucks from salt and keep cleaning them up and maintain them, I don't think they will rush that quick. And my question is, do we have enough employee to drive those equipment? Or we're going to buy new equipment, just let them sit at the yard and look at them, and we'll have a new trucks? Do we have enough employee to use them and clean the town? This is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Woodson, are you on? Still?
I am, sir.
No, I just had a question. On the radios, Counsel Marquetti stated, we, previous speaker stated that we had purchased radio equipment. I believe those were portables, but portable radios for the police officers, but could you just, the radio equipment that you would put in a cruiser, the reason why you would have to upgrade the radio equipment?
Of course, through you, Mr. Chair, that was, you're correct, it was portable radios, nothing to do with the cruiser radios, completely different animal. And then what we usually do is take cruiser radios and outfit them. We just transform from one cruiser to the next. And I believe I mentioned this to the Subcommittee, but I can't remember. Ford, in their infinite wisdom, has changed the body style of the interceptor again, changed the dimensions. So our SUVs, that we usually go from just one vehicle to the next, we constantly change radios out, so we don't have to buy new radios. But this year, if this is approved, we'd have to outfit to new radios because of the body design. So the radios, I believe Counsel Marquetti was originally talking about, were portable. But, and then this year, the two cruisers that were scrapping, we usually just swap out the radios. They don't fit in the new consoles for the new style 2022 interceptor.
Thank you.
I hope that clarifies that.
Counsel Marquetti, does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want Heather to answer your questions? I was going to refer to her.
That's fine.
Do you have another question that you want to ask?
For the chief, yes.
Oh, you have a question for the chief? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Chief, question. The new vehicle and the update on the radio, it's going to be ready for future if the town make any change regarding camera and audio on a vehicle? It's going to be preparing for that in the future, or we have to spend more money to update that again in case, you know, the town, you know, move on a different way to added camera and audio on the vehicle and officers?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, we're already working on that. We're in discussions now as far as body cams. We are not going to cruiser cams at this time, but body cams record 100% of the interaction. So the equipment that we're buying now is absolutely capable of working with the new body cam technology.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, I guess there was a question for you. Do you have anything else you want to add, based on the comments from councils?
Yes, I know there was a question whether we can actually use these two vehicles. So both of these vehicles are used and would be used in snowstorms and for fighting snowstorms. One of them is a one-ton dump with a sander. That's a smaller truck, dump truck with a sander, and it is used every storm to salt and sand the town and to plow the town. The other one would be replacing unit 10, which currently is just a salt truck. We would be turning this truck into a truck that could be used not just for salting the town, but plowing and also be used as a dump truck, a six-wheel dump truck. So yes, we do have enough staff to use these. We need these for fighting snow. I understand the concern regarding a sweeper. A sweeper would be just as expensive as those two trucks, and we wouldn't have it for when we would need them for actually treating the roads in the town. So I understand the need. We do have two sweepers right now that are currently both operational. Can we, do we need a new sweeper? Absolutely. Is there going to be other potential funding sources for the sweeper in the future that will be more directly related to what we use the sweeper for, which would be corresponding to stormwater? I believe there will be.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather, do we have enough employee to drive those equipment?
Those trucks are already driven by our employees every snowstorm. We're, we're going to take two trucks out of service and drive, and put two new trucks in service. So employees will be in those trucks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
I'm going to say yes, just because we don't want to lose the grant, but technically, I have not understood your answer correctly. Doesn't make me feel clear, but yes. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Alazo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 25, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 54, Section 42(c) and Mass. General Law Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection k, vote to approve the form of the following dead exclusion question and send the same to the town clerk for placement on the ballot for the June 8 election. Quotation, shall the town of Southbridge be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay cost of design, site acquisition and construction of a fire station, including all costs incidental or related thereto? Question mark, close quotation with a yes and a no spot. Is there a motion? So moved. Okay, I'll go. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the Fire Station Building Committee has come before this body to share with it its proposal for going forward with a, a new fire station. This would be the requirement if we wanted to put a ballot on the June 8 election. We have, by law, have to give the clerk at least 35 days' notice. That notice, this is the last possible meeting that you could vote to do that, to, to meet that requirement. There have been, a couple people have asked me about whether or not there should be a dollar amount in this particular question. And I should first point out, this requires a two-thirds vote to put this on. So there are two ways. You can either have the referendum question on the exclusion first, and then the council then votes the appropriation, or you can do it in the opposite order. But according to council, and this is one of the few times that I do check for a second opinion, because of the, you know, the sense of nature and the timeline, you don't want to have any issues. They concurred, and I checked with the Division of Local Services as well as publications from the DOR. You could, you could go in either order, and if you do the appropriation first, you usually make a contingent on the passing of the ballot question. The issue, though, here was, you know, we've, we've talked about this, and we have a number that was used at the Fire Station Building Committee of $25.7 million. That's the last number I recall. I don't have the numbers in front of me at the moment, but, you know, there may be some changes in that number. We haven't discussed about, you know, what the true cost would be for the site acquisition, um, whether we would have to make any modifications, um, whether we would take any money from prior sales of real estate and use those for the acquisition. So, we, we haven't hammered out a number. So, not looking to ask the body to put something on the ballot that, um, doesn't make people aware. I think there'll be enough information that comes out of Town Hall and the appropriate people on either side of the question, that people have a pretty good idea what this is going for. I know, I wanna say the UPS driver came in the other day and said, "So, you're building a fire station? What do you think it's gonna cost?" And, you know, people know that it's roughly about twenty-five million dollars for a new fire station. I think that word will get around. So, it's really to get, for the purpose of the timeline, to start the ball rolling. This is the question that would have to be on. Uh, and if it passes, then this body can then take up the amount of the appropriation they're willing to, to vote for, to send out to bond after the fact. If the referendum question for the debt exclusion doesn't pass, then you don't have to have the appropriation. If we did the appropriation, it wasn't contingent, um, then you'd have to rescind that. So, um, just looking at the options, this seemed pretty, the easiest and most straightforward way to say, "Do we wanna build it?" Um, and then in that information campaign, people will have a good idea of what the approximate cost would be. And then when it comes, assuming it gets passed, then you would have to come up with the actual dollar amount that you wanna borrow and bond for. If it, if the ballot question as proposed fails, then, then people have to go back to the drawing board and think of what they wanna do, um, whether they redesign that project or they go forward with a project to, um, potentially alter the existing site.
Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm certainly in favor of sending this to the voters and letting the voters of Southbridge decide whether or not to build a fire station. The problem that I have is, is transparency, and as you were just speaking, thank you for the explanation. It's my opinion that I'd like to, I would like to see as a taxpayer in this community, a dollar amount attached to this. If I was going to the polls to vote on this, I'd like to see, I know the Fire Station Building Committee's worked hard, but not to exceed or a dollar amount of some type on this in the issue of full transparency to the public, that we don't just assume that the public knows that we're building, possibly building a twenty-five-million-dollar fire station. A lot of people may not know that. So, it's my opinion that I'd like to see a dollar amount placed on this question for me to vote yes this evening. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
Um, I know I've talked to the chairman about this, and some of the counselors, uh, we've got some history with our purchase of a water company, and when we went to purchase the water company, um, the numbers were right up front. Uh, there was one option. We were building a new three-part elementary school in Southbridge. And they just put the option on. The option passes. Then the money gets killed. It created animosity. It created a time stall, and we ended up with additions to our elementary school. Um, our middle high school did not go to the ballot, uh, because we didn't need to do a debt exclusion. An amount was plugged in, and we came in under budget, on time, matter of fact, early. And we were under the budget number because of the accountability and oversight of the project. I too am of the thought process of putting the number on. In other words, let's not delay it. Let's put it out there. Let the voters decide. If this is what we're gonna do, this is where we are. I mean, if our building committee, I have faith in them, they're gonna have to be hands-on with that bottom-line number. We were as a building committee for the middle high school. So, for me, I, I would rather see the number on. Um, and I'm just gonna leave it at that for now and see what the other counselors feel. Thank you.
Counsel Steve?
Um, thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I was curious, um, I guess through you first, to the Town Manager.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Uh, can you hear me? Is this a little clearer? Okay. Um, I was curious about, uh, the legality of throwing something in at the end, say, um, can we phrase it in such a way, the, the way it's phrased, all related thereto, um, with estimated cost being, like, what, when put the range that we have come up with, like twenty-five to thirty million, depending, because it doesn't specifically state which version we're using or where we're putting it or anything else like that either. But I know we're all talking about, at the moment, we're all talking about Worcester Street, because the other projects have, some of them have died. Um, so, I was just curious, what would the legality of putting a range in there as an estimate be?
I, I, I don't know, but me personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable with a range. I do, I do understand what Counsel Lazo's saying. And I do, I do respect those opinions, because, um, I, I didn't, and I thank the Town Manager for his work on this, because we've gotten a lot of guidance from, from him and his office, uh, since he came aboard in this project. And, uh, when this came out, I, I did ask the question about the number. Personally, I, I guess I would feel more comfortable with a number being voted on by the, by the council, because, and this is no disrespect to my fellow colleagues that are sitting here. However, I don't wanna envision a thing that says, okay, we voted a debt exclusion. However, uh, okay, that's great, but now when it comes back to council, the project gets nickled and dimed to, okay, we're only giving you ten million dollars. You understand what I mean? Um, the proposal is for, to build a new station. So, um, that, that's just my point. And who knows when it might get built? So, it's no reflection on anybody sitting here, but it could be different counselors coming forward in a couple of years, when you finally go out to bond. And, uh, you know, you have a council that says, well, no, your, your number was just, you could go for debt exclusion, but hey, we're only gonna let you go out for five million or six million. Do you understand what I mean? So, uh, that's my point on that. I think I had Counsel Dow, did you have your hand up? Counsel Dow first, and then Counsel Lazo, Counsel Dow?
I, uh, I agree with you. We shouldn't have any numbers on a, on a ballot.
We what?
We shouldn't have any, uh, amount on a...
Should not?
Should not, because, like you say, it might change when the time come to build a fire station. And, uh, the residents or the citizens, they know it's gonna cost money. And, uh, if somebody like to find out, they can always call, uh, the fire station or the Town Manager, get an idea. Uh, we don't want them to vote on something and then in the future change that numbers, uh, be a different numbers. So, I think, uh, we let, we let them vote on it. They need a fire station. They're gonna pay for it, no matter if a dollar or, or a million dollar. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
Yeah, uh, from the construction aspect of it, when the building committee gets together, and I mean, I'm just basing it off of building committees that I served on. What they do is, they get a, a per square foot on the building and, and some projections on the takings. When we built the high school, we were very fortunate. The economy was very low and prices were very good as far as the contractors coming in with casigli and the subs. We ended up on, under budget and on time. Um, but, our representatives that we've hired to do a lot of this work for the building committee should put together the projections of the, uh, projected takings. Right now, we're at high end. Nothing's been higher value-wise as right now. So, if our projections are based off of right now, the way I look at it is, we have a safe yield. They're gonna put cost contingencies in, cost overruns should be plugged in on all fronts on this project in that bottom-line number. Nowhere would I think that I'd give somebody an open check, checkbook to fill in an amount for a project without a guideline number, even if you wanna put the contingencies higher. That's all factored into that. What's it gonna cost for a fire station? Twenty-five million, okay? All those contingencies should be in that number when they, when it gets put out to the public. So, at that point, if that's the high, uh, high-side number, and you don't get killed with it, even if you have some extras or unexpected things, which usually it's in the groundwork, and that's something we learned up at that new high school.
Right.
It's not in the structure. Uh, the structure is what it is, and it's bid properly, and, and your contingencies are put in. You should make it on time and under budget. Um, when it comes to, uh, unforeseeing things, it's usually in the ground. But still, that number, I really, you cannot give anybody an open checkbook and just say, "We're gonna build a fire department." What's the number? Twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-seven? I don't know. You will never get a fire station passed without some sort of, this is the budget. This is what we need to do this job. Then you can convince a taxpayer to say, "I think that's worth it. I think we're getting our bang for the buck." Or, "I think that's too much. We can't afford it." And again, guys, I mean, for me, do-nothing's not an option, but do this properly so we don't have any more delays. This fire station's been bumped for the police station. It's been bumped for the middle high school, and now it's, it's time. And, uh, we need to deal with it. Whether you, you like the option or don't like the option, I'm not here to argue that point. We're going forward to the voters. Let's put that number on there. Let's let it stand on its own merits, and then we can deal with it when it's said and done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just, I'll get to, if you don't mind, just give me a second, just to respond to, um, Counsel Lazo. I think, uh, if you reflect back to Deputy Chief Hewick's, um, explanation and what was in the packet, our opinion of probable cost was, we did have contingencies built into that. So, we did have, uh, a lot of contingencies. We had taken a look at the assessed value plus a ten percent contingency for the purchase of property. So, we do have a lot of contingencies based on that. Um, the numbers that were run for the last, um, iteration of the opinion of probable cost was to the most recent, their knowledge of what the most recent cost per
The market.
square foot on the market for a fire station was. Um, so then, of course, you know, we're at the point where we have conceptual designs, but not specific schematic designs. Had we gone out maybe for schematic designs, we might have a, a better, clearer picture of that. Um, however, I think the thought when we talked with the Town Manager and the group was that, um, do you spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a schematic design to just, you know, with not a knowledge of whether the town wanted, had the flavor to go forward or not? So, I, I think the numbers that we had, our recommendation, um, speaking as the fire station end of it, I'll step down if people are opposed to me speaking from here, um, was that the recommendation, which was brought forward, voted by council, was the Worcester Street location, the citing and funding of that with that opinion of probable cost. So, do we go with that number, not to exceed twenty-six million? I think it was twenty-four, twenty-five-point-seven. Do we go not to exceed twenty-six million? Gives you a little bit of buffer. Uh, I think we have clear numbers of what the tax implications will be. But, um, I'll leave that for further discussion. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you, I was actually thinking along the same lines. I was thinking of, um, just simply adding to the end, not to exceed twenty-seven million. So, that way, people have an idea of how much it's roughly gonna cost. But at the same time, we're allowing for, in case there's any cost increases, in case there's something that comes up that was unanticipated in the, um, during this process, during, especially during the schematic design, that we can cover it without having to worry about having to go back and have another vote on more funding, because that's the only thing I worry about, is if we have to go above that, um, proposed number, and we put that exact proposed number in there, that we're gonna have to go back, and that might not be supported. So, that, that's my only concern, is having to do this piece by piece by piece. If we want a number, which I am leaning towards wanting a number on there for transparency's sake, I, I would, I would say it should be a little bit higher than the proposed cost, just in case costs come back to be higher. That's my only thinking.
My goal, our goal is under budget, on time. Uh, we have some experience with those projects, uh, in the recent future. Um, and I just wanna add one thing, and now I'll go to Counsel Adams and then Counsel Dow. Um, Counsel Lazo earlier said that the fire station got bumped for a couple of projects. You gotta throw in there also, uh, the DPW facility. So, it got bumped, uh, facility that was supposedly only supposed to cost a couple million. That was up around fourteen million and still, still climbing. So, I had Counsel Adams first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I, just, uh, agree with, uh, Counsel Lazo, Katrona, um, and Ryan, and I don't know if there was anybody else, but put it in there at the end, up to, but no more than, at a certain amount. Um, I think does show true transparency. I know everybody can make a phone call to the Town Hall and all that kinda stuff, but a lot of people just don't do that. Um, and, you know, the, I would rather them see it at the ballot. I'd like to see them before the ballot, but at the ballot, uh, be able to know what they're voting on, the dollar amount there. And I completely understand where the Town Manager is coming from with this actual wordage, and I, and I do appreciate everything he's done, because I think it's really moved a lot forward, uh, faster with this Town Manager coming in here and with the support of, of the committee itself. Um, I, I do have a question. Is, besides adding a number to it, is, is there gonna be an area where there would be, like, what your taxes may raise to, in there, if, if the average house is two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars in this town? This is gonna be your average increase, quarterly or annual increase in your tax? Can we do that? And is it the right thing to do?
I, I'll defer to that. I mean, huh? I've never seen that in debt exclusions, that's normally, um, incumbent on the voter to educate themselves?
Absolutely.
As, as what the true cost will be, and edu, us as a committee to educate what that will be? Um, I, in all my experience of thirty-plus years going through, uh, Proposition Two and a half overrides and debt exclusions, I have never seen that. Um, the question is very straightforward. Is it yes or no?
And, and Mr. Chair, just to follow up real quick, it's not that the Town Manager hasn't done that, that the committee has not done that. The, the information is out there. I know counselors have put it out there as well, of how much this estimate costs. So, it's not like people are holding back from doing it. It's out there. You gotta do a search or make the phone call to, to the Town Hall or to one of the counselors. So, you know, I just don't wanna make it sound like we're not doing it. It's just, is it something that we're allowed to do so they see it there? I don't know, you know? I, just asking the question.
So, could Cable switch this so I could see who's out there? Because I think Deputy Chief Hewick's out there, and I'm not sure if he wanted to speak. And I know I have Counsel Katrona and Counsel Steve, so, um, Counsel Katrona, you have a question first, and?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, again, to repeat what previous counselors have said, do-nothing is not the option. But my thought process is, do we go back to the Fire Station Building Committee and the Town Manager and tighten up that number? Either we have an emergency meeting, council meeting, or before we put a number, if this council agrees to put a number on the ballot? I don't know that the process is determined.
Deputy Chief Hewick, you had the last opinion of probable cost, correct? If you wanna, uh, if that's all right, Counsel Steve's, if I can go to Deputy Chief Hewick? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Hewick?
Yes, the most recent was twenty-five million, seven-hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, as you might remember, one of the reasons why we went with Castle Bowes, uh, to represent, uh, the project for us is that they are generally within one percent plus or minus, uh, that number, uh, which is, uh, much tighter than some of the other companies that are out there.
So, yeah. I, I know we've had a lot, just again, follow up to that.
That's a good number. I didn't know that, that's a tight number. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations, and they've run the numbers a couple of times, uh, through their cost estimators, to make sure that we're pretty close. Um, and I think part of it too was that we have some contingencies to Counsel's points, that if, uh, as we've done in other projects, and Counsel Lazo could probably verify this, that sometimes you do alternate bids. So, we do know that we tightened up the square footage of the building to take some of that ancillary equipment and not have it built right into the original project that we have, um, area behind that footprint, um, that if we do have enough based on the bids that we get, if there's enough there and we can build that ancillary building to house that would need heat and water and oil, we'll build it. If not, then we put it as a, um, alternate bid to, uh, perhaps have them pour the foot in and conduit to it, and then go to Bay Path and ask them to build it later on. So, I mean, we've thought of a lot of things that, contingencies to, to say, let's get the best number that we can. best number that we can, and if there's alternate bids, we'll do that. Such as, we did alternate bids at the new high school for lighting for all the fields up there and some other stuff, that we were able to get favorable bids. Now, we could get some favorable bids. I've been in contact with Captain, well, Robbie Barton, the former firefighter here, who's a captain in Charlton, who's now the chair of their building committee, and talked about the scope of their project, and how it looked for theirs, because they're also going out. And they were surprised that they got some pretty good bids when they went out, because they did it a little differently. They went out and got bids, and then went to the town for the funding. So there's different approaches for that. I think our approach is good as well, because we'll go out and have it designed based on the ability that the town says, yes, you can build it, here's the money, because I don't want to waste money to, personally, to waste money to go out and design a building that the town says, I'm not even going to pay for it, because then you just flushed money down the toilet.
Just to follow up, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Deputy Chief Hewlick, for that information as well. Through the chair, can we make a motion to plug that number in to?
Yeah, okay, now, let's get further discussion about some other stuff, to make sure we have everybody had an opportunity to talk. I know the chief is out there. Counsel Steve?
Well, that was one of the things I was going to suggest, too, is actually making a formal motion to do that. The other question I wanted to ask is to kind of refer to what Counsel Adams was asking earlier. Would it be possible for the town legally to publish a pro-con mailer, kind of like what the state does with ballot question books, and to send it to all voters? And we get a very clear statement of what the pros are and what the cons are from independent organizations, you know, if, I'm assuming there will be pros and cons, you know, on both sides, and we can get somebody who can actually succinctly state why, and then send it to everybody?
That I don't know.
Presumably, the pros will state the numbers, and the cons will state their versions of the numbers, and however that works, you know?
Something that they could take a look at down the road.
Yeah.
Counsel Lazlo, then Chief Normandin?
In my earlier discussions, I don't think we have to bring the number up any further than where it is. I mean, that's kind of a panic button. I really do have a lot of faith in the deputy chief and the chief and the building committee and the Jack Jovan's chairman, that they've worked the numbers and worked the facility and location to the point where we have a number. And even that number there is workable, but putting a ceiling on it. And I'm not, I wasn't trying to make any insinuation that they didn't put contingencies. They did, because that's a common practice. And I know that this gentleman on my side here, the chairman, he went through that school building committee, you know, for years we were shoulder to shoulder on this thing with all the alternate bids and stuff. So for me, the number that the building committee plugged in is the number that I would be looking to put on here. The question is, do you want a number on here, don't you? I don't want to debate the fire station option or the fire station. And Gus, to your point, when you say, geez, you know, we have to inform the voter, absolutely. We did it on the water company when we purchased it, when we did the high school. I mean, this is a yes or no question. It's nothing to get upset over. It's a matter of, some people are going to look at it from the affordability, and some are going to say, our firefighters deserve it. I mean, if you walk in and see the facility and its shortcomings, we need to do something. But I think that's a discussion for another day. I think today, what we're looking at is, put the ballot question on, do you want the number or not? And I think the number that the building committee plugged in is fine. Contingencies are plugged in, and our economy and our market right now are at high end. So I think it's going to work out pretty well at number.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Just to your point, I didn't take offense about the contingencies, just so you know.
I think you did a great job on it.
I just wanted the voters to understand that, because I'm sure you, I don't want to assume anything, but, or that we assume.
No.
But we're on the same page, just to make sure that the voters knew that we have addressed contingencies and made sure that we did the right due diligence. Chief Normandin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give me one minute, and I really appreciate the banter and the conversation going back and forth. But I just want to let you know is that, obviously, over the last two years, we've been in a pandemic. Between the police chief and myself, and obviously all the key roles in the EOC, we've been very transparent to the residents and you guys about what's going on. My goal with pushing this fire station forward is also to do the same thing. There'll be no, it's not a Taj Mahal, it's a building that is needed, and I think we've already discussed a lot of those things. But I think as we move forward, people need to come to us and ask questions. Come to the fire station. This has been going on for about, really, about two, almost three weeks now. I've got minimal interest of people making appointments to the fire station, pushed it out to social media. I think as we keep moving forward, and I agree with Counsel Lazlo, you know, the number is the number. We've got contingencies in there. But if people need to know, they need to come and ask the questions. We'll do the best we can to answer them. I think we do have all those answers, but thank you for giving me this very short time. I think we're moving forward in a good direction. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti, did you have your hand up? And I'll go back to Counsel Dow, because I haven't heard from you yet.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have to agree with Counsel Lazlo. When I look at this, the question that it's proposed here, it's just an open-ended commitment. We don't really know what it, it could cost anything. You're just, you're giving, asking the residents to give you the authority to spend whatever it takes, from what I can read here. So I do agree, a cost should be put in here, probably after the word amounts, and before the word required, something like up to, whatever you want to put in there. The amounts up to, required to pay for the bond. I will agree with Counsel Lazlo on that. Thank you.
Counsel Dow, then the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think putting the numbers on a ballot, it's a mistake. We need the fire station. Better than putting the number, put why we need the fire station, put why we're doing it, or put why it's important. You know, the people, they're going to say, well, we have fire station, it's working right now, we're not going to spend this much money. When they see the number, they're not going to understand. They're going to see a huge number, they're going to panic. Soon you see the 25, or 26, or 27, they're just going to say no. We just got, we need them to say yes, and then we'll come back in here and discuss the amount, and we can put limit on it. But if you put the amount on the ballot, my feeling, no fire station. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
So the beauty of having this here, and when I was a selectman back in the 1990s, is, as the manager, I can get you information like that. So as we're talking about this, I'm going through all my notes, the guides that I've looked at, and I've been texting fast and furiously with our council. The language that I put on there for tonight's question came right out of the DOR's publication. And council reminded me that comes right out of the statute. The statute does not put the dollar amount in. And I quickly found several towns that have done exactly what we're doing, and they issue a voter information sheet, which several have mentioned. The question doesn't have the dollar amount, but below, they explain that this is a debt exclusion, and the amount is estimated, or we've already made the appropriation for. So council has said to me that we cannot put the amount in the question, because that's what the statute says, that you just ask the question. But what we should do, and I found an example in Groton, Shrewsbury, Arlington, I've found several others, that the clerk's office could mail out a notice of ballot question explaining what it is, or we could put something on the website. They put the form of the question, and then they give a fair and concise summary of the question underneath, explaining, you know, what the work of the committee has been, what the estimate is, or better yet, I posed, we have another meeting on May 10th. If the council is so inclined, we could have an appropriation vote at that time and make it contingent on the passage of the June 8th election, such that people would know unequivocally that you are not exceeding a certain dollar amount, and then that could go into your informational document that you send out or you post. So what we need to do here this evening is vote to send this to the town clerk, so we meet the requirements for the June 8th election. And the format of the question is following state statute. We can, we have time to go through subcommittee in the next meeting and put on an appropriation, a dollar amount. We can say not to exceed, be it 25.7, or we build in some additional contingency, and then we say that appropriation will be contingent on the outcome of the June 8th election. So everybody can be crystal clear. I just would caution you not to amend it based on, I can share the screen and show you the language in the statute, but I also have council on text here telling me not to amend it either.
So, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for your quick summary on that, and you're, and that's what we pay you for. Anyway, thank you for that. That was the similar information that I had gathered from Charlton, because they had a facts and question, and the question was, and I know I've had this conversation with my colleague, Mr. Lazlo, or Counsel Lazlo, I apologize, speaking out of turn, they're calling you mister, used to all the school committee days, that the facts and question stated, why isn't there a dollar amount? And their answer was, the state statute did not allow the dollar amount, that the amount was appropriated through the town meeting. So I know conversations with my colleague, again, was we are more or less the town meeting type of body that would do that appropriation. I would feel comfortable doing that, at least that there's an appropriation order that says not to exceed that amount. And then, with the town clerk, perhaps, given the fact that we're changing the location of the polling place, that we could incorporate, hey, the town election is on this date, it is at this location, this is the question that will be on your ballot. And that serves two purposes. One, to make sure that we're transparent enough that we're not trying to, that people can't say that we're trying to get an election at a location that's not normally done, and that we didn't have the information. So Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Now, knowing that we can't change it because of the statute, I would favor that proposal as well. That way, we can be fully transparent, we can let everyone know what the cost is going to be, without affecting the viability of the question, and its legality on the ballot.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
I agree. I mean, you're knocking them both out. Obviously, we want to make sure this, well, at least I do, once we get to the ballot, and then by the 10th, we can vote on the appropriation itself, and then by June 8th, everybody has an idea of what's going to cost and what the question is. So this is all I'm asking for at this point in time, to be as transparent as we possibly can, and the town manager just provided both of them one shot. Thank you.
Deputy Chief Hewlick?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. I went back and looked at the opinion of probable cause. There is just over $4 million in contingencies built into that figure.
So you're down to 21 million?
And a good economy, we may be. And just to let everybody know, too, we are in constant communication with Congressman Nails' office, relative to possible infrastructure money for the town, and we're touting some monies for this. So, I mean, there may be a combination of things, even though we get it passed, that, you know, we may have some other factors that come in to assist the town, that we continue to fight the good fight. And they're talking a lot of money through the federal government, so I think if all my colleagues are in favor of a fire station, get out there and call the congressman and put some pressure on him as well. Counsel Lazlo?
So let me understand, Mr. Town Manager, state law does not allow us to put this on the ballot, the number, correct?
For the debt exclusion, that's what I've read, and that's what's in their publications, and that's what council says.
Okay. I mean, don't get me wrong, I know I live in the state of Massachusetts where they write blank checks 24/7, but I just thought that we could have added a little bit of transparency through the ballot question. But if the state law, and again, I want the public to understand this, I'm going to vote for this, because I want it to go to the ballot. And the thing is, if the state law states that you cannot put the number, then I, I'm not going to go and violate the law. But at the same time, there's a lot of Facebook stuff going on, saying the council's going to do what it wants to do about the fire department, and I, that station. And I turn around and constantly telling people, you're going to have your opportunity, not only to vote for or against, but to deliberate it. Because the campaign's going to start, the notifications, the numbers are going to be crunched. We've done this before with many other projects, and whether they end up the way you like them or not, it's the public that will have the final say. On the town meeting, former government, we had special legislation back when this charter was formed by Jack Farland, and what it did was, it detailed, because we were actually a city for 30 days, we had city ordinances, and we had to go in and get special legislation, stating that the council takes the place of the people at the town meeting, and the town manager takes the place of the selectman. Which, when you define the powers of something like this, it changes the equation on the funding portion and other things that you're going to vote on. So for me, I'm going to be voting yes tonight, with tongue-in-cheek, so to speak, because I think what the right thing to do is, is to put the number on, but I'm not going to break the law, and I do want this voted on.
Right, thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think, like Chair Jovan say, it's a federal money, we can go after too. So if you put the numbers on the ballot, the people are going to think, this is how much the town is going to pay the whole amount. But if you get it approved, and you go out there, search where we can get some help from the government, whatever, and then put a detail, and then you want to promote it after that, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All right, so we'll go that route for the May 10th meeting?
I will work on it, and I just emailed the council three samples of the voter informations for debt exclusions in the towns of Shrewsbury, Groton, and Arlington that I found, so that we could look at that in terms of an idea how we would want to get the word out for a fair and concise, so that people, so that the transparency is there. It wasn't that I was, didn't have it in the back of my mind, but again, given the tight timeline, I was trying to work on getting this onto the ballot in the right timeframe. And again, council has been there to back me up, and that's why I used them this evening, just to make sure, because I didn't want us to tweak something and then find out we couldn't do it, and then have to have a special election. So I will work to get the wording for the appropriation and the contingency, and we'll get that squared away for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion? Is there any roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazlo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steve's?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that required two-thirds, just.
Yeah, it was eight to one with Counsel Marketti opposed. Counsel's forum, Counsel Marketti?
I'm good, thank you.
And Counsel Steve's?
I don't have anything except to just mention that we're doing the Capitol meeting on Thursday at 6:30. And I'll be here, but also, for people who want to watch, you can watch them on YouTube or go to meeting or the Cable's channel.
Thank you. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item, being repetitive at the beginning of the meeting, because I've been asked by taxpayers, citizens, I've bumped into people at a coffee shop around town, I've received phone calls, tomorrow night is the budget for the Southbridge Public Schools. So if anyone that wants to attend, please do so, either online, or you can certainly call in. The numbers can be, you can locate the numbers on the town website, and I encourage all those that want to speak up or speak to the budget to please tune in, sign in, phone in, everyone that I've spoke to, be heard, have your voice heard, please. And I look forward to the meeting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel Lazlo?
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Town manager, 221 Average Street, is a tree falling down. 221 Average Street.
All right.
I say that a couple of minutes ago, and a lot of residents complained, it's dangerous, branches everywhere, falling down on a sidewalk, they're afraid somebody's going to get hurt. And also, the house behind that tree, the porch, it really doesn't look good. I think the building inspection should go there before somebody get hurt, and then no sorry after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
That was brought up before, and it is not, based at least on the reading of the letter, it's not in the right of way. So we did issue a letter to the property owner indicating that we believe that they should consult an arborist and have the tree removed. I can follow up again and see what our options are. I can follow up again and see what our options are now, but it appears to be on private property.
Again, it is residents concerned there. It's very dangerous for, I know it's on a private property, but they're falling the branches on the street, on a town property. You know, it's dangerous for people walking there, for everybody, you know? It's not safe. So either the house, again, the, the house, the porch rotten, falling out, you can see it, you just got to put your finger on it, it will fall right out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. As I stated last meeting, I toured DPW. Since then, I have gotten the opportunity to do a ride along with the police department, and do a ride along and visit with the fire department. I want to thank Shane for spending time with me and talking about the condition of his vehicles and what he's looking for in his department going forward. And I also want to thank Group Four at the fire station for spending some time and having some real talks with me. You know, we can be up here, we can have these discussions, but until you're on the ground, talking to the men and women who are serving our community, actually working, you don't know really what's going on. So I want to thank them for their candor, their honesty, and for giving me their time to show me what they do. I deeply appreciate it, and I thank them, and I urge everyone on this council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a couple of things. This evening, I posted on social, my social media page about a selecting a community redevelopment slogan. This is part of the, the fund, the grants that we received not long ago, and this is helping the Redevelopment Authority put this out. This is not a survey or poll to me, it goes right through Survey Monkey. But if you, if you could share it on social media or anything like that, I'd appreciate it. It's basically slogans, a slogan that they're going to pick out any time town, the Redevelopment Authority does work within the town itself, that type of slogan or banner will go up for it, and so you know where it's coming from, especially since we're, we're really pushing the Redevelopment Authority, and since we received that grant. Also, I was reminded by Ms. Dean that there's a Redevelopment Authority Wednesday at 6:30 PM, and it's about the urban regen, it's a urban, urban agenda meeting, which will be held online, and it's basically the Redevelopment Authority 101 training, the basics of what they're responsible for knowing, which is, I think we're leading the right direction with the, the authority, that the Redevelopment Authority has within the town. I think it'll be a great asset, again, to the town once it's up and running, they're doing it the right way. So just a reminder, tomorrow night, 6:30 PM, I'm sorry, Wednesday, 6:30 PM, it'll be online, and if anybody needs the, the information to go to meeting, let me know, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the town manager. Do you have any status on the Munis conversion? Is it done? Is it still going on?
Let's see who's still online.
She just left. Karen just left.
Yeah, no, I know Will and Melissa have been working diligently. There's been some issues. We did have a call with Munis, and they've added more people to it. I know they were going live with, with certain, at least with certain modules recently. I can get an updated email to you tomorrow, the next day.
Thank you.
But I know that they've been cutting over, and, you know, it's, it's painstaking, but they're making some progress.
Okay, thank you. There's no rushing on that. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 10th, 2021.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second.